Welcome, everybody. And so you can see everybody, I'm going to call to order the school committee meeting on April 30th, 6:30, at Dover Sherburne Middle School. I believe we have a quorum from all three committees. Great. So I'm sure you guys all saw the agenda online. The first part of the agenda that is traditional is the community comments. We'll make a slight change and we'll offer community comments for anything that's not related to the school's start time. If you're not here for that and you have something you'd like to bring to our attention, those are welcome. If you are here for the school's start time, we will have an opportunity for comments when that agenda item is up before the school committees review and debate and have a conversation about the presentation that Dr. Keough will do. So if you have prepared remarks, hold tight and we'll ask for those in a couple of minutes. Asking for any community comments? Great. Hearing none. We'll move on to the superintendent evaluation process of the agenda. This is a critical point for the school committees to review Dr. Keough on an annual basis, and I'll turn it over to Ann.
Okay. Thank you. So yearly evaluation of a district superintendent is one of the school committee's most important jobs. The format we currently use was introduced by the Mass Department of Secondary and Elementary Education in 2012 as part of the statewide revamping of teacher and administrative evaluations. The goal of this new evaluation system is to foster an opportunity for continued growth and improvement. The last two steps in this process are to first read out loud anything you'd like to have formally included in the evaluation, and then for the committees to vote to adopt the end-of-year summative evaluation. In other words, if you don't speak tonight, what you say now, tonight, the prepared statements people are going to read, goes into the official evaluation. What you wrote in the evaluation that you've handed in, Andy will have access to, but it does not become part of the official, quote, the permanent record for the evaluation. I mean, it's clear that he understands that. So, to arrive at the summative evaluation, the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, which is Henry, Kate, Lori, and myself, we met and assigned numeric value to each rating category. There was zero to four where there were five categories, and zero to three where there were four. We found an average rating for each goal and standard. We focused on steps one through three in the evaluation, which were progress, cultural, performance standards, and overall summative performance ratings. We did look at an average of other subcategory performance ratings, but they are not part of the official summative evaluation. It should be noted that with 16 committee members, the chance of ratings averaging out to proficient performance or met goals is increased in most situations. It's really hard to move the needle. That is one of the, I guess, pluses and minuses of having this many people get to provide some input. In steps one through three, there was great consistency in the responses, leading to ratings of met and proficient in all the categories. And the overview of the process, which we'll be submitting, states, "For fiscal year 2019, members of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee completed individual end-of-cycle summative evaluation reports for Superintendent Dr. Andrew Keough. Based on the ratings averaged from all 16 school committee members, individual evaluations, Dr. Keough has achieved an overall rating of proficient in his second-year superintendent of the public schools of Dover and Sherburne. At an open meeting on April 30th, 2019, members from all three school committees read individual comments submitted as part of this evaluation process. These comments are captured in the official meetings, excuse me, minutes of the meeting." It sounds, as you can tell, it sounds very, basically, this is just sort of protocol. This is how we have to kind of summarize this in summary. There were some questions about, could we do a different sort of evaluation? Were there things that we could do as part of this evaluation? And that certainly, we have a little bit of influence over a very small portion of it, and that's something that we can certainly discuss as a full committee or as individual committees, and then bring to the SESC next fall. But for the most part, it's a very prescribed process. We have little ability to change. A little housekeeping. If you read something tonight, please email me an accurate copy of your statement. In other words, like if you make edits along the way or change things, which I know often happens, can you include those? And then email them to me by the end of the day tomorrow, May 1st. What I'll do is I'll put them all together in one packet. I'll send them to Amy Davis. She will submit them as part of the minutes. We will save her the hassle of the, actually, our engagement challenge of trying to keep up with everyone while they're reading, so we send it to her, she doesn't have to type it in. And then after, we've gone through, everyone who wants to read, you do not have to, but if you'd like to, is read a statement, will vote to adopt a summative evaluation process. Please. All right, so let's read by committee.
Okay. Sure. Does anyone in Dover want to start, or pick the official lead? I can do it. All right, we'll go, we'll work this way around Dover, and then we'll leave you, Adrian. My comments are as follows. First and foremost, thank you. Thank you for your dedication, focus, and commitment to the Dover and Sherburne School Districts. Thank you for not being afraid to take on big, significant, and important initiatives to improve our system. Thank you for working with 16 school committee members, three budgets, four buildings, hundreds of educators and staff, and over 1,000 students. Thank you for caring. As we move forward, I'd like to see you continue to have the confidence and vision to take on important items to move our district forward. Continue to put all our students first, challenge all to innovate, and ask for help from all of us in the room when needed. Think about how you communicate. Repeat your message and remind everyone how your work supports the district's mission, values, and strategic objectives. And remember, if you ever need a reminder about the work you and your team does, take a break, walk the halls, or sit in the classroom. The students are living evidence in how hard you work and the positive impact you have on each and every one. Thank you.
Dr. Keough's thoughtful student-centered leadership this past year has continued to advance DS in the areas that were identified as important when we hired a new superintendent in 2017. As hoped, his strategic plan has become a living document and has served as the basis for his concrete goals and subsequent action plan. In addition, his development of and adherence to the core values of DS has allowed us mutually understood guiding principles. These are not just words on a poster for Dr. Keough; they inform decision-making and underscore non-negotiables. In a similar vein, his overarching commitment to making sure that all students feel a sense of safety, both emotional and physical, belonging and purpose. This steady forward-thinking conviction is exactly the leadership that we need to keep us moving forward in a planful, confident, and equitable manner. This year, Dr. Keough hit the ground running. He's had to be bolder to put himself out there more than in his first year. The Student Services Reorg, management of the start times discussion, and support of the Academic Invasion Committee work all come to mind. I'm sure that this has caused some discomfort at times, but his commitment to remain accessible, listen, reflect, perform adequate due diligence, and data review, weigh alternative perspectives, and articulate recommendations has served us well this year. As a point of opportunity, we continue to talk about the critical nature of communication district-wide and how it can be improved by bringing all stakeholders along in a targeted and timely manner. This is an ongoing area in which progress has already been made. And I will note, not mentioned in the mid-cycle self-evaluation that we received was a well-attended evening of the superintendent and insistent superintendent, which we hope will be an annual event. Finally, Dr. Keough generally cares deeply about this district, and I encourage him to remain committed to scheduling PDF, playtime, downtime, and family time in order to stay balanced for the long haul.
Thank you.
Two of the central purposes of conducting evaluations are providing feedback in a form that is informative, consistent, and helpful. Perhaps that's the primary purpose, and creating a record of performance review. I find the public nature of the superintendent evaluation to be efficient in creating a performance record, but contrary to communicating, both giving and receiving informative and helpful information. I'd like to, that we could in the future explore the possibility of amending the evaluation process within applicable legal requirements to incorporate a component where there is an opportunity for reciprocal communication without subjecting comments to dilution or risk of personal embarrassment. Given my perception of the existing process, I've chosen not to provide public feedback, and I intend to speak with Dr. Keough individually if he's so inclined.
Andrew has been an inspiring leader this year and has driven the community to a more rigorous standard of education and care for our students. His dedication to principles, to integrity, to equity, and to fairness is total, and his holding us all to aspirational standards of education for all is constant. I continue to urge him to be bold and to be bolder as the years go on. Communication and perhaps revisiting scheduling of time are the two main areas of future growth in my view, but surely these will come, I hope. This year has been so full of meaty subjects and key tasks that it's unreasonable to expect that all elements will be solved and elevated in one short year. On behalf of the community, I would like to register and express my heartfelt thanks to Andrew for the many hours and long days of work that he has given this year. I also extend that thanks to his leadership team. I know we cannot know all the time he has given and continues to give. However, his worth is not shown in the quantity of his efforts, but in the quality of his thinking, his sage words and decisions, and the inspirational leadership he has brought to our three towns.
That's it for Dover. Kate, you want to jump in?
Dr. Keough began his time in the Dover Sherburne Schools by meeting with all stakeholders over several months and then creating a detailed strategic plan. All of his efforts to date have been centered around this plan and focused on student learning and well-being. He's extremely thoughtful and detailed in everything he does. He is on top of current educational practices while also valuing timeless, stated-driven instruction. Dr. Keough holds himself to a very high standard and is always striving to do better. Dr. Keough has taken on many important tasks in the last two years and has excelled at keeping things in motion. The implementation of a communication committee, school start time task force, special education audit, leadership teamwork, and superintendent coffees held in Dover, Sherburne, and Boston are some examples. Dr. Keough leads by example and is a clear and effective communicator. He welcomes feedback from parents, teachers, and students, and listens with an open mind. He communicates through his newsletter, Twitter, blog, emails, and meetings, among other things. His love for learning is demonstrated through his own professional development and in the way that he supports teachers and students. He is aware of the many pressures that face students in a community like ours and maintains a balance between students' health and well-being with academic rigor. I have confidence that under Dr. Keough's leadership, Dover Sherburne will continue to advance through our strategic plan and will be able to effectively tackle issues that come down the road.
Vote this way. Megan, I think you're next. Good, great. Jen?
Dr. Keough was very thorough and thoughtful as he created the district's strategic plan last year after many meetings with stakeholders. He has continued to be thorough and thoughtful as he works through the goals that have come out of that plan. Dr. Keough is transparent and approachable and considers the children first in all that he does for our district. The special education audit and the subsequent recommendations are one example of this. His communications with the school community have shown improvement this year, which has been evident in the process of gathering and sharing the information from the start time task force. He and Beth McCoy are a strong leadership team, working well together to accomplish several big-picture changes for our district at once, while still effectively managing the day-to-day happenings and working seamlessly with three school committees. Thank you.
Okay, great. Angie, I'm sorry, I flipped over here.
That's okay. Dr. Keough has set important, necessary goals. The school district as a whole is high-achieving and expects a lot from the students and faculty. That being said, such high expectations can bring unintended consequences. The emphasis this year on the whole student has made progress. Delegating research with regards to start times and what makes the well-rounded graduate has impacted the kind of students we produce. Academically, we have the resources, but the manner in which the information is conveyed and how and what is included has been reassessed with a positive result. The hiring of a student services director and a new assistant principal at Pine Hill were both handled in a clear and concise manner. Dr. Keough has listened to the various persons involved, the students, faculty, and parents. It is a delicate balance to ensure academic rigor and a well-adjusted student. Dr. Keough has made student-school-life balance a priority. While we have made strides in some areas, there is still more work to do. As the facilitator of a high-achieving district, Dr. Keough has to balance student needs with performance. In doing this, you have to please not only those students who are working diligently and sometimes sleeping less than they should with the expectations of a community that prides itself on its schools. Add to that the need to be as fiscally responsible as possible, and that is what is expected. Dr. Keough has done a good job this year of attaining his stated goals and has acknowledged when he wished he could have done more. The areas that are being addressed will need improvement in years to come. The needle is always moving as more is learned about how children learn and the impact that the current environment has on their mental health and learning capacity. It is my hope and expectation that Dr. Keough will continue to address these issues, no matter the opinions of the community, and always keep in mind that he is here for the children and is their advocate.
Ann from the region.
Okay, I'll start with Lori. Okay. I too intend to keep the bulk of my comments private, but I did want to take this opportunity to publicly share my heartfelt thanks for the vision and leadership that Dr. Keough has provided this year.
Thank you, Lori.
Oh, yeah. I also want to keep my remarks short, as my colleagues on the various school committees have been extremely eloquent and right on point with how I feel. But I thought it important to say two things. Thank you, and great job. In particular, your focus on inclusiveness, social and emotional learning, and the emotional well-being of our students is really crucial as we move forward with new challenges that our students will face. I think that's it. Okay, thank you. I'm not short of my comments. I'd like to note that I appreciated your honesty and thoughtfulness in the self-evaluation that you shared with the school committees as part of this evaluation process. The ability to recognize strengths and also to identify areas for improvement is vital for the success of any leader and for the process of continuous growth that is at the core of this evaluation process. Thank you also to you and your administrative team for creating a strategic plan for the district that articulates what DS values and provides insight into the areas defined as central to the continued improvement of our district. Not only is it a useful reminder of what the districts have defined as important and has made the evaluation process more meaningful, it gives us insight into the direction the district is headed and into the continued changes ahead. You and Dawn make a great team. The budget process is complex, but Dawn does a terrific job of making it feel accessible to the school committees and members of the town committees. While in some ways the region was lucky this year, smart planning and long-term decision made this year's budget strong and successful. Those important comment on that since that's one of our per-view over. Your commitment to social-emotional learning and to student and staff health and wellness is clear in the actions taken this year. While the initial rollout of the special education Student Services Reorg might have been a little bit rocky, it will certainly have an impact on student services in all four buildings. And while change can be hard, especially for region, I believe your ideas are moving the district in the right direction. I'm excited to see what changes have, having a student director, student of, director of student services, programs. While these macro programmatic changes are being made, please do not forget the micro level. Not everything needs to be a big undertaking. Small changes can be relatively easy, can be more populist in nature, and can have an important impact on students and staff now. There are people, teachers, students, parents, who have great, easily implementable suggestions for changes that will help subsets of students immediately and in meaningful ways. I look forward to seeing how you continue to reach out and to work with those who live these initiatives, who experience the challenges firsthand, in an effort to make small, positive changes in the day-to-day that supplement bigger initiatives. Communication, building consensus, listening and compromising, tapping into the wealth of knowledge and experience that we are so fortunate to have here at DS. These will help create the positive change that you envision in a way that builds community and further reinforces the "We Are DS" mantra. Although some want all of these changes to happen quickly, I understand that it's a long-term process that requires a long-term perspective and time for thoughtful consideration and consensus building, and I look forward to seeing where the district can go under your guidance and leadership in the years to come.
Thank you.
Maggie?
Hi. Yeah, hi. First of all, thank you so much for your service to our communities and commitment to students, as well as for the detailed self-evaluation that you provided to all of the committees. In terms of specific performance, I very much appreciate the connections that you were able to make between the district's strategic plan, your own goals, and actions that you took this year to cover those goals. I agree with your self-assessment that you have achieved or are on the way to achieving your safety goals this year, and I believe our districts are all better for it. In particular, I want to point out your collaboration with Dawn Fattori and the ongoing efforts to proactively and efficiently manage the financial resources of our three districts. It's been heartening to see them so carefully managed over the past year, including infrastructure maintenance and improvements, health insurance cost containment, and program evaluation and changes you made with in programming and with respective budgets. I would also like to point out your work in collaboration with Synergy Solutions on strengthening our security infrastructure, as well as training personnel to effectively respond should we lose a security threat. The safety of students and staff is paramount here, and I do appreciate your leadership in that area. I also appreciate your self-reflection indicating that you would like to improve your communication and ability to constructively and collaboratively manage conflict. I appreciate your reflectiveness to notice that this is an area where you could grow. And as we enter the third year of her superintendacy, it's inevitable that conflict as it relates to adaptive change will arise. My hope is that you'll be able to work with colleagues at the region to build consensus and buy-in from talented, hard-working faculty around future change and growth. And I'm happy to speak with you further about this offline if you'd like to talk at a later time. I thank you so much for your service to the districts this year.
Thanks, Megan.
Oh, sorry. Like most districts, we find ourselves facing many challenges to educate, keep safe, and emotionally support our students and employees. Dr. Keough has a clear vision about what it will take to ensure we continue to improve in these areas and all areas in the coming years. Our role as school committee members is to consider, reflect, and where appropriate, vote on this work in the district. While the evaluation process is specifically about Dr. Keough, he is not the sole person responsible for the work included in the evaluation. The administrative team, staff, and where appropriate, the community work alongside Dr. Keough to make DS a leading school district. We thank all of them, and Dr. Keough especially, for his time, energy, and commitment to achieving these high goals. My ratings included in the summary report as used by the state indicate Dr. Keough is a proficient superintendent. However, according to their standards, and Dr. Keough's reflection, there are areas of high proficiency and work at a much deeper level than is exhibited in the state evaluation process that we have to use. I'd also like to say that we, as school committee members, should consider from time to time if we are providing the necessary staffing and financial support to implement the district's goals and meet the needs of our two towns. One area that may need additional support in the coming years is the business office and HR and central office. As school committee members, administration in our towns require more than financial reports and analysis, and as managing a 300-plus-person workforce becomes more complicated, we may need to ensure we have the resources available to get that work done and to support Dr. Keough's administration. This is my last superintendent evaluation, and as such, it's my hope for Andrew to continue to collaborate with his team, students, and the community to continue to define "We Are DS."
All right. The role of superintendent is a hard one. To use a business analogy, if the school committees are the boards of directors, the superintendent is the chief executive, chief operating, chief marketing, chief people officer, head of customer relations, responsible for our chief financial officer, our general counsel, and our chief academic officer. That's a big job, especially in a set of districts that meet the needs of two distinct towns in two different counties. As I said last year, I believe that bringing Dr. Keough to Dover Sherburne is my biggest accomplishment during my seven years on the regional school committee, and I feel even more strongly this year. Does Andrew exceed all expectations all the time? No. That's an impossible bar. But over the past year, I have seen him finalize and present a much-needed and much-overdue strategic plan, make necessary changes to our student support organization, hold educators and leaders to high standards, manage daily fire drills, build key relationships in our towns, deliver budgets that work, communicate effectively to broad constituents, demonstrate and evangelize hashtag "We Are DS," and worry about the health and well-being of over 200 faculty and 2,000 students. I believe that there's a positive energy permeating these districts, and there is a belief that DS can continue to improve and build on our success. So in my final superintendent evaluation, I have two messages. First, to my fellow school committee members, demand continual improvement while supporting Andrew and his administration. Encourage big ideas, yet offer help where we can provide. And remember that these schools will be here and be great long after we are gone from these seats on the school committee. And my message to you, Andrew, is be bold without forsaking the details. Be hard-charging, yet patient. Trust your gut, yet know the data. Be sensitive, but don't take things personally. Keep raising the bar on communication and continue to challenge DS to be better. You have taken on a very big role because of the impact that you can have on all of our kids, and I am glad that you are in that role. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, everybody. I really appreciate all of those comments. And just a reminder, by the end of the day tomorrow, email to me with those, please. I appreciate that. All right, now, we need to vote in the summative evaluation by district. So, can I hear a motion to accept the FY 2019 summative evaluation for Dr. Andrew Keough from Dover?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. From Sherburne?
So moved.
Second.
And from the region?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Any discussion from Dover? All in favor, say aye.
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 Discussion from Sherburne? All in favor?
Discussion from the region? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Can I just add one thing to? I appreciate how much time and energy you guys put into this process. For the teachers out there, just imagine 16 people kind of assessing you. It's not easy for them in public. In public, on camera. It's not an easy process, but it is actually a really, really important process. What I like most about it is that it's based on the standards set up, albeit by the state, but they are good standards for any superintendent or school leader to live by, and I appreciate that. You're right in that no one can possibly meet all these standards. But to always strive, if they only had a few standards there, then we would be lackadaisical as school leaders, and that's not good either. So these are good categories for me to evaluate myself and hold myself accountable. And finally, I can only do this job to the degree that I have the support of my leadership team, and includes the central office leadership team, including our administrative assistants, and Dawn, and Debbie Dixon this year, and Beth, of course. and Beth, of course, and all of our folks who lead the schools. They are the boots on the ground with the teachers. So any success that I have is really, it's a tribute to all of them. So I want to thank them and thank you for your insights.
Thank you, Dr. Keo. All right. Appreciate this thing process. The next item on the agenda is the school start time. And before we get into the presentation, it might take some time. We're going to open up to community comments. Some of your comments will be addressed probably in the presentation or in the discussion with the superintendent, I mean, with the school committee. As a point of sort of process, I'd like you to raise your hand. You'll be called on. Stand up and state your name and what town you are from. Try to keep your comments. Sorry?
We're school.
School works too. Any information you want to provide. Try to keep your comments to a minimum or at least a short period of time. And then if we start hearing repeats of the same comments, we don't necessarily have to get into a process of repeating each other over and over. But I would like as many people that took the time to come here for this important process to speak. So thank you very much for attending. Assuming someone wants to say something. Go into the, I mean, go into the, go into the.
Carolyn Rangel, Dover, Dover Sherburne Middle School. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent. I think this process was an excellent one. I think it's been transparent. I think it's been thorough. I think it's been informative, and that's helped them in making a big change. And I also want to say I am in favor of pushing the start time later, but in terms of, I know you have made a recommendation about the flip. I'm actually personally indifferent in terms of whether we do the flip or there was, I believe there are four options. And there are two middle ones. One is the flip, and one is basically eight, if I'm remembering it correctly, 8:15 for middle and high school, and I think 8:45 for elementary. Correct me if that's wrong.
Well, what is a shift?
Right. One is basically just a shift, and one is a flip. Then there's everybody starting at the same time and no change. So I would say I think it's not economically feasible to do everybody starting at the same time, and I am not in favor of no change, and I'll explain why. I'm personally indifferent between the two middle options in terms of whether it's a shift or a flip. In terms of why, I would say we spend a ton of money every year on challenge success, and those programs are awesome, but we actually don't even know how much they're affecting our students' health and welfare, which is why we're doing them. The one issue that we actually have data on is that later start times for adolescents markedly change their academic performance and their social emotional health. And so in my opinion, to keep on having schools start for those middle and high school students at 7:30 and then pour a ton of money into challenge success programs, when I was thinking of an analogy, I was like, it's like going for a run after eating at McDonald's and saying you're healthy. And it just doesn't make sense. And so if we really care about our students' academic success and social emotional health, we have got to move the start time of the middle and high school.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the administration and all the educators, all you do for our community. I also appear from Dover Elementary School. I wrote a detailed email to you earlier today, and I hope we can discuss that at some point. I have two disclaimers. None of this will affect my family's life or childcare support. And second is, I'm by no means a sleep medicine specialist or, but I'm a physician, so I have some family activity to topic. So I think by fix, and I'm fully in support of starting later for middle school and high school for obvious reasons. Data is so compelling that there's no doubt about, at least in my mind. But I don't think by fixing this problem we should create another problem. And I'm going to be very specific. By the recommendations of American Cardiopediatrics and CDC, the range of sleep, the guideline basically says a child between the age of six and 12 should sleep to 91 hours. And as opposed to a adolescent or high schooler who would need eight to 10 hours of sleep. So I would like to know by the specific, I'm talking about the flip option, which brings the school, the bus time as early as 6:50 a.m. So I would like you to portray how a elementary school student would go to sleep, what time he or she would sleep, and would this be according to guidelines of American Cardiopediatrics and CDC? So that's my specific question. And the rest we can discuss obviously later.
I have senior slides. We can just make sure we address it.
I do speak to that a bit in the slides. So we have some research and kind of some perspective on that. So I will definitely do that. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to respond to you today, but I was planning to reply. I promise.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Margaret Parsons. I have two kids in the Dover system, and I'm also the nurse here in the middle school, so I kind of have a foot in both areas. I won't repeat what you were going to say. I was going to echo exactly what you were saying. But in addition to that, just, you know, a lot of working parents in this town don't get home until 6:30, 7:00 in the evenings. And if we have to have our elementary school kids getting 12 hours of sleep a night and getting them up at 6:00 to get on the bus at 6:50, it's not going to work. I know my husband personally wouldn't even see my kids during the week, and I just don't think that's something we want to ask of our families. And just one other quick point is, unfortunately, my kids would be one of the first bus stops in the morning for trickering. And so if I have my kids out there at 6:50 in the morning during the winter, you know, they're going to be out there in the dark of the slippery, dark windy roads and no streetlights and no sidewalks. I don't think that's a great scenario either. Couple more.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dan Khan. I live in Dover. I have two daughters, will be arriving at Shickering School. I'd echo thoughts of the doctor and the nurse who just spoke. Indeed, the AAP does recommend elementary school students to get more sleep than high school students. As I read the presentation that was dated April 9th, and I learned about it today, I found the analysis very compelling to move the high school and middle school start times later, but totally lacking in an analysis of what would happen to the elementary school. It does seem that we may be trading one problem for another. So I'd certainly like to see a more usually, exclusively, collectively exhaustive analysis.
Chris Hayden, I also have a daughter who will be starting kindergarten this year. I, my thoughts echo exactly what the last three parents have said. But also, we did seem to have done a comprehensive survey of high school and middle school families. Was the same thing done at an elementary school level where those families surveyed? And if so, maybe this data was made available, but I never saw this. I'm hoping this is something to address more in the presentation.
Yep, it was.
Yes, sir.
Amy Collins from Dover. And so I have two kids in Shickering right now, one about to enter and one who will enter in five years. So for the next 11 years, I'll be at Shickering. And then I do have 14 years, stretch, for the middle school and high school. So I'm very concerned about both ages. And I appreciate all the work that has been done on this study. I fully support moving the middle school and high school start times later. But I don't support the flip at the expense of the young children. Although the research shows that the young kids can change their schedules, and the change will have really great effects, I believe. The early start time means that the elementary school kids will have to go to bed as early as 6:00 to get the 12 hours sleep. And my kids really do get that 12 hours of sleep. Corporate America is not changing their work schedule. So what that means for all working parents is that they will see their kids less. My husband will see, at most, my kids' parents or in the, during the weekdays. And sacrificing such important family time, I believe, is not a sacrifice we should even consider. Research is very clear that family meal time and family time decreases emotional, social, and behavioral issues in kids. And so by moving the start time earlier, it will force the kids to go to bed, which means less family time. I would support a flip option if the first bell at Shickering, meaning the time the door is open, was no earlier than 7:50, and the bus routes were no longer than 25 minutes. And that would mean the first bus pickup would be 7:25. And I think that's a reasonable adjustment we can make. Yes, it would mean someone needs to look at the bus route in a much more efficient manner, and maybe add an extra bus or two. But it would still allow a flip without making it. So it's such a sacrifice for the young children.
I'm Unia Sloss, named Dover. I have a fifth grader at Shickering and a seventh grader at DS. And I have seen the evolution of my seventh grader, who used to pop out of bed at 6:00 a.m. every morning, to dragging him out every morning. I drive my kids to school so they can get extra sleep. I think the sleep is so important, and I'll echo Carolyn's comments. I am very sensitive to the elementary school needs, and I just think the shift has to happen. I'm not sure what the best plan is. I'll leave that up to you. And I appreciate all the work and time and effort you've all put into it, but they all need more sleep. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Janice Berry, and I'm a Dover Sherburne educator who's been in the district for 11 years. That's a thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to respectfully ask the school committee to delay your vote on the proposed change to our start time. I'm very appreciative of the work that's been done by the start time committee, and I believe they've done an incredible job. Thank you for getting us to this point. Thanks to their work, I am convinced that a change is necessary, and I believe that most, if not all, of my colleagues also feel this way. The reason I would like the school committee to delay their vote is because I believe that we're missing important information and details that will help you to make an informed decision. Waiting to figure out some of the critical details until after a decision has been made feels like putting the cart before the horse. Details like when will sports and drama be allowed to start after dismissal? At the high school, will students even have access to extra help after school? When will clubs and extracurriculars move? Will there be a late bus? Can any extra help time be offered before school? Will our Boston students benefit from more sleep as a result of this change? Will any sports be cut, like swim or golf, due to limited access to local pools and golf courses? Will there be a limit on how often certain clubs or sports can be dismissed early from school? Will there be limits on how late sports practices and drama rehearsals can go in the evening? If so, with less time, will we need to lower our expectations? One specific example I'm curious about is the middle school musical. In the fall, students typically rehearse from 2:30 to 5:30 multiple times per week. If these rehearsals are now starting at 3:30, will they be allowed to rehearse for three hours? If not, will the directors be forced to do junior shows instead of the full productions we're accustomed to? I look forward to hearing from Dr. Keo later this evening, and I anticipate that he will provide some of these answers. And if so, I believe the community needs time to digest this information and to provide feedback back to you, the school committee. At the end of your April 9th discussion on the school start time, the point was made that the research on school start time is so compelling in support of a change that the details should not get in the way of making a decision. I agree with the first part, but not the second. The details do matter. In my opinion, attention to detail is what separates a good teacher from a master teacher, a good school from an excellent school. I hope you will consider this request to delay your vote until the critical details of this decision have been outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Neil Kessler from Sherburne. I just wanted to say, I did want to thank you all for the amount of work you've put in, because I know that the work has been going on for a long time, and you really batted around about as much as you could bat around to try to figure out what the best approach is. Being the parent of a kindergartner and a first grader at Pine Hill, the only thing I would ask is when you last met, you talked about things which were maybe hybrid approaches, like flipping and then shifting everybody. And I understand that that pushes middle school and high school maybe even later, but it does address some of these concerns about the younger kids having to get up earlier. I think somebody said about, you know, maybe we could do 7:25 or 7:30 bus, you know, or something of that sort. And I think looking into options where you can not only tighten the bus schedule, but maybe even shift start times for everybody a little bit later just to get as much of that time back for the elementary students, I just think would be beneficial for everybody.
Carly Echols, I am a DS alumni, as well as a teacher at the high school. I'd just like to piggyback off of what Janice said. She so eloquently captured sort of all of the emotions, I think, that a lot of people who do extracurriculars coach and participate in. I just kind of want to ask about youth sports, since we're talking about shifting everything further back. I think we can all have seen either our kids or our students learn much more from being on a team than necessarily doing their math homework that I assign them. And I know a lot of the youth sports are coached by volunteer parents, and they get, you know, field time after the high school athletes. So if we're not, you know, if high school sports aren't done until after six, does that mean the little guys who are supposed to be in bed by six thirty are now facing the problems the high school students are where they're not getting enough sleep?
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Benton. I'm in Dover, I've got kids at the elementary school and the middle school. And I want to reiterate what everybody has said, which is a big thank you to everybody for all of the hard work over a very long time. And I'm really encouraged by the proposal that you're making today, Dr. Keo. And I think it's through what I've understood through this process is it's very clear that the science with respect to the health and wellbeing of the middle school, high school kids is, you know, it demands a later start time. So for that purpose, I think that's terrific and I really hear the emotion in the room with respect to the details, but it makes me think about, it's an analogy, like, you know, driving, just add a bit more drama into the scenario here. You know, you're driving your kid to the hospital, this is the health and wellbeing thing. And on the way, you know, you hear that actually you need to be going to a different hospital. This is going to be a better service to the kids. So what do you do? Do you change direction or do you wait until you've figured out the parking arrangements? You know, so I feel like the time is right because this has been discussed for a long time and the science is clear. I can hear that there's a lot of detail to work out, but I do feel like the momentum for changes is there. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm jumping in on this a little bit late, so I apologize if I'm reiterating things. I did have a handout from some of the school committee members. I don't think the science is...
Carolyn, can you say your name and...
Oh, sorry, Carolyn Malloy. I have three kids and a middle schooler and a sixth grade daughter. My two older boys are over at St. Sebastian's. And my husband and I were born and raised in Dover, we've lived here for over forty years. So I'm hearing some science this and science that. And I actually have a handout from a Harvard medical study that says the science actually, you know, says that later school start times are not the solution for tired teens, that turning down the lights in the evening would do more to help teenagers than get out to help get teenagers out of bed in the morning. So you can feel free to take a look at this, I'll hand it out. But, so again, I apologize if I'm being a little redundant, but Andrew Keo mentioned in his email today, I was reading, as the person in charge of leading the system in the proper direction and protecting the safety of our students, he cannot disregard the science, what it suggests. And we are potentially significantly harming our adolescent children by requiring them to start school so early in the morning. And with all due respect, Dr. Keo, my husband and I attended this school, this Dover Sherburne school. And I can assure you that neither my husband or I, you know, were harmed or escaped from the school start time in place now. And actually had your mother as a teacher back in the day.
I was just gonna say, so you know I attended.
And it's been in place for many, many years and it's worked out really well. I think as we all know, what has significantly changed is the constant use of electronic devices. And, you know, as parents, we need to start parenting our children maybe a little more efficiently or, you know, have your hand and just, you know, not allow this constant use of electronics going so late into the evenings. So rather than disrupting the lives of everyone involved with this proposed flip school start time, may I suggest that we just stop enabling this unlimited technology usage and start putting some limitations on our teens. You know, they're going to be entering the real world real soon, they've got a junior. And college classes start early and jobs start early and that's a reality. And rather than coddling them and enabling their behavior, I feel strongly that we should take devices away, turn lights down earlier in the evening and, you know, make them go to bed. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Richard Valens, I'm from Sherburne. I don't have kids in school anymore. I used to sit right there and when I did, this is the first time this issue came up. And the issues were hard then, the issues are hard now and I do not envy you for having to make this decision. I think one thing that's even clearer now, whatever it is four years later, is that the science is even clearer about the importance of more sleep and later sleep for our older students. And I would urge you that whatever other decisions you make this evening, or whenever you're going to do it, that you keep that as a laser focus. There are very few things that a school committee or school system can do to simultaneously improve the health, wellbeing and academic performance of essentially their entire student body. This is one of them. And there are very few things that a school committee can do to pull those things back. And not making this change is in fact one of those. So I would keep that in mind when you do it. As to the long and really quite thoughtful list of the things that are not known and not decided, I sympathize with that, but I do not think that it should prevent, that it should delay a decision. I think those many things will fall into place, some of them more comfortably than others. But you don't make a strategic policy change with absolutely everything decided ahead of time. You leave some time, as I understand the proposal as it has been floated, that time exists, in order to put all those things into place. They will fall into place. Virtually every school, I don't have a statistic in front of me, virtually every school that has made this choice has not gone that. They've all, to my knowledge, except perhaps one or two that you read about in one of your ones, have decided that it was the right change.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Rick here, my wife and I are in preschool in Dover. I can't really speak to the high schools, the middle schools, but I can certainly speak to preschoolers who've been watching it for at least nine years. Well, my wife's been watching it for twenty-five years. And there's a lot of activity that goes on in the mornings when children come into school. This youngest age group, the six to nine, ten years old, need more attention in regards to making sure they get their routine going. A lot of the youngsters, I've seen them in action, they get up and the start of their morning is more like play until they can ramp up and start their day, it's like stretching before a run. And if you don't stretch before a run, you're going to damage your muscles. With this younger age group, they're not going to really have that opportunity to kind of stretch those muscles before they actually get into school. I've seen pros and cons, I know Montmore School District has done this. Sort of like they can see by behavior, they see it's successful, but then there's other schools that haven't seen the same level of success for the classroom or wherever. So there's information on the internet. But I think it's important for, to take the advice of what's on the school committee and the start block as collaboration. Now, nobody's really collaborated with us. And not, I mean, we're just a preschool, but we're the largest preschool in Dover. But I really would like to be more thoughtful as far as, I know this presentation, I read through it, I looked at it, it seemed weak to me as far as identifying issues that might come up in the elementary grades and the level of, for a flip. And I think there'd need to be a lot more consideration. Again, children need to stretch before they can run and this younger age group needs that time. I have a lot of families here in Dover, seen them over nine years. So it's four school districts, I said, if you need them, Westwood, Medfield and Dover. And children need that very important. They also need to see moms and dads at the end of the school day, it's really important. So I would listen to what the school committee's all set, talk more collaboration. I think there needs to be more collaboration before a decision is made. Again, because I wasn't, but I think there's experience out there and I've seen it for nine years, I've been receiving children in Dover and in the other school districts. And I see them in action in the morning, really need to stretch before they start the day. And I think this would kind of put them in a juggernaut of the adult world and that's not a place we want to be. Science shows as far as appropriate education is that we don't want to cram them into an adult world sooner than they're ready to handle it. We learned that from Montessori education and UIC, you may not have been familiar with Bush's High School, which came up in nineteen sixty. That is, being on children's level, receiving the whole child, their social motion development is important. And I think this is one, it might look like a great idea on paper to flip the schedule, but I think we might potentially be harming the youngest generation that we have in the public school system.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Evening, Grant, Stephen. I've got a, had one kid graduated from the high school, I've got another kid in high school now. Again, thank you to everybody that's put in a lot of time here. When my wife and I first moved to Dover, it was twenty-ten and we had kids, both our kids were in Chicering at that time and we went through the first iteration of the discussion around the school start times. Knowing a little bit about the science that's just continued to build since then, I was really jazzed and excited five or six or seven years ago that we weren't actually going to get to grips with this issue, listen to the science and think about what the kids' health needs on balance. And it's not to deny the complexity of the issues. There's a lot of complex logistics, a lot of personal issues that are impacted and I'm not trying to diminish that. But central for me is the health of the children as based on what I think is unquestionable data that I think Dr. Keo will go into. So went through that whole iteration the first time around and it didn't come together for reasons that I think people are aware of historically, the time, the, you know, status of the superintendent and under those conditions, et cetera. And so my kids have gone through this whole system and not benefited at all from what's happening across the country in other school systems in terms of making each adjustments. My kids are now, hey, if this, it does get passed in some form, I'll have one year of benefit, as it were, for one kid. I'm still here, not because it benefits us, because it's not really going to benefit us. I'm here because of everybody else's kids, including all the elementary kids that are going to become middle schoolers, I believe, in a few years' time, and high schoolers. So, you know, again, I'm not trying to diminish the details and the experiences and the negative impacts that will come from a complex change. I'm just asking that everybody stays absolutely laser focused on the health issues, the clear medical data, this, of course, that. And we have over a year, if there's a decision made tonight to move in a particular direction, we have over a year to figure out these details. And to my mind, there's a lot of smart people that work in this committee, a lot of smart people in the school system. And with the right collaborative attitude and spirit, we'll be able to figure out all these issues and get to a much healthier and new status quo for the school system and for everybody involved. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I just want to respond to the comment made that handheld devices or blue light is really...
Sarah, why don't you just introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, I'm Sarah Wilson and I'm a Chicering parent. But just responding to the comment over there, I, you know, personally am in favor of keeping the school start time for the elementary school where it is, but shifting the middle and high school school start time. I don't know if that's realistic, so therefore I'm willing to rob Peter to pay Paul. And the reason why is that even though personally I've got young kids, as Grant mentioned, they will get older. And professionally, I am a school counselor and I have seen far too many students in my office because of lack of sleep, in emotional crisis. And at the school that I work at, they actually have a later school start time, one day a week, on Thursdays. And on Thursdays, my office is very quiet and I have ten years' worth of data on this. The nurse's office is very quiet on Thursdays reliably. It is remarkable, it's not a coincidence, it is not just one year worth of data, we're talking ten years' worth of data. And these are kids who have the same, you know, rules around handheld devices or, you know, lights-out time in their house. And when that school start time is at eight fifty on Wednesday night, those kids come to school healthier and happier. So it is compelling and it would be irresponsible of me as a parent who really wants that school start time to remain at eight thirty-five for my young ones to not advocate for this change if this is the way we're going.
No other questions or comments, I should say, I'm sure there's some questions. Thank you, thank you for everybody for taking the time to speak. It shows that there's a lot of thought and we are now going to listen to Dr. Keo's presentation around his recommendation. And then from there, the school committee will have an opportunity to have some discussion and ask some questions. I'll turn the lights down so you guys can see what's going on. And I'll move my big head. Is that better for folks in the back here or do you feel those lights back there?
That's good.
Okay, so first let me just say, thank you everyone for coming. Actually, if it's okay, I haven't even stood up. I'm actually really glad that we're at this point where I think we now have people's attention. And it's amazing to me how hard it can be as a school leader to get people's attention. I mean, you can send things home over and over and over, but once you state you're going to go a certain direction, that gets people out there. And that's good, I think that's actually, I mean, that's the way it is. And so I'm actually really, really glad that people are here. Let me, before I start, I just need to say, the recommendation that I put forward is not some attempt by me to think that this is some sort of panacea for all that ails children. I too spent the overwhelming majority of my school experience or my career at the secondary level. And as a principal and as an assistant principal for essentially twenty years, nineteen years, I saw, I saw the times when the kids melt down. It's not like it's a daily occurrence, I understand that. There are some periods of time when it's actually really, really fine. But there are other times when the planets align and the kids are not getting their sleep, that they don't have the skills to cope with that kind of depression that kind of takes over. Those of us who have children, had young children, know what it's like to lack sleep. The science to me suggests that it's crystal clear that our kids are suffering from a lack of sleep. I can't, I cannot, cannot dismiss those memories in my head. I have been in school systems that have lost children. These bridge programs that we're setting up in schools across America and across Massachusetts are because kids are unraveling. So what is that all about? Is it just the screen time? Is it poor parenting? Is it overloaded kids? Or is it possibly something that we're doing just by asking the kids to come early? So I did want to say that before we started. I'm not going to be able to answer all the questions that people had in my presentation. I'd have to go back and rewrite it for a few hours, I suspect. But I do think that I can answer some of the things that people asked about. So where are we? We've gone through this entire process, the system went through the process. And, but there were concerns. When I came here and interviewed for this position and eventually took the position, people definitely expressed concerns about this. Granted, it was predominantly families and parents, it was not as much teachers. But the families and parents are important stakeholders. They're important, they're one of the key cogs of our system. And they felt strongly that this should be something we should focus on. And so we did that. Since then, we went through this whole process, because it didn't work out in fifteen, sixteen, people felt like it may have been dismissed too quickly and wanted it back, so we put it in the strategic plan. And this year was the year that we were going to begin that work. So we put together the start times task force, which had a job of looking at the science and the research, see if any of it had changed, look at what other schools have done nationally, internationally, locally, and look at whether or not there's any possible changes for us that might work. We're unique, we are our own system. We're not Weston, we're not Wayland, we're not Ashland, we're not Winchester, Acton, Barksboro, we're Dover Sherburne and we have our own unique set of needs and values. So that was the charge, let's look and see if there's anything that we can do. We had our presentation on the ninth and went through the scenarios that we felt as the start time task force were the ones that were the most palatable and those were mentioned earlier. Since that meeting, there were questions, there were requests. So in that time, this is the follow-ups, the superintendent notice of the scenarios was emailed to staff and families the week of the eighth. We had coffees arranged, we did have that break in between, which was nice, don't get me wrong, I liked it. But it did kind of bite into our time for comments, et cetera. But we still held the coffees at Chicering and Pine Hill and the middle school last week. It was interesting where the bulk of the feedback came and that was in fact from the elementary school levels. Ultimately, we saw two regionals, parents at the regional meeting in here and one elementary. That was not huge turnout from the regional level. The, well, I'll get to this. So we had the community coffees, we have looked into the bus driver availability and confirmed through conversations with Connolly that the flip model can work. So that's the big question, right? Would it even work? That was one of the questions. And the other question was, could we consider a one-run model? So we asked them that as well. And the answer to that was no, because they can't secure the drivers. I don't know if it's a function of the economy or what the deal is, it's not, it's a kind of a tricky job, right? You have to be available early in the morning and available in the afternoons, but not during the day. And they don't believe they could secure the nineteen additional drivers that we would need to make this happen. It is, it would be expensive, that's for sure, because you'd essentially be doubling your fleet. And then the public safety discussions, I actually had a long conversation with Chief McGowan on this. And he concludes, unfortunately, I haven't been able to catch up with Chief Thompson in Sherburne, but I know Sherburne has traffic issues. Sherburne has twenty-six thousand cars coming through per day. Dover on Center Street has eleven thousand on one direction every day. So I'm sure theirs is a similar number. We are twenty miles from Boston, we are cut through. Google Maps has made it very clear that you can come down through here and avoid that Center Street traffic. Or you could come up Bridge Street and avoid South Natick and then circle down Glen Street and get on sixteen after the light. People understand how to beat the traffic and that's our reality, we're perched right in the middle of it. So the chief did say, he believes we need to be cognizant of the potential for an additional five to ten minutes on those runs. If we were to bump the elementary times out and the flip model shows the elementary starting twenty minutes later currently, sorry, ten minutes later than the existing regional time, seven forty to seven fifty. So that's a big follow-up. And there may be others that come tonight as we go through this. Just as a recap, and I know the school committee has these handouts, I'm sorry I didn't bring as many as people would need. But the Pine Hill Chicering runs, again, just as a recap, the current pickup times are seven thirty-five to seven fifty-seven and the new pickup times would be six fifty or later. The reason we're saying later is because we genuinely hope that we can find efficiencies. One of the things that came out of the conversations with Connolly is that, and they were diplomatic in how they said this, so I don't want this to look bad on Connolly Bus. But they did say, we have some stops that don't necessarily have to be right directly in front of the child's house. It could actually, there might be a central location that kids could walk to and have a bus stop. And that if they, we could find efficiencies there, that could save a lot of time. There are other things that we could do to save time. So the question has come up, cost, what are the potential costs? So the question has come up, cost. What are the potential costs? A potential cost would be, if you wanted to, it's a trade-off. If you wanted to bump out those elementary times a little later, you could add a bus or two to our overall fleet. It's different than hiring 19 drivers. They did think that they could hire five. So, if we wanted to add a bus or two, and for some of the further reaches of the district. So, in Sherburne, that would be out Western Ave, Salt and Stall for, I'm sorry, is that Bogastow?
Yeah.
Bogastow Brook. Pretty far out near the Millis, and if you get in there, that's really far out. It takes a while to get there. So some of those runs are longer. Those are people who are probably getting on earliest in Sherburne. Dover has some long ones as well. If we could apply some additional buses, yes. That could resolve that time that's necessary to get the buses from the elementary schools to the secondary schools for an 8:35 start. So, that's a big question mark, because that's a decision that would have to come through the budget process. The, I, the reason, again, that I said 7:30 or later, or 3:00 PM later, or 2:15 PM or later is because I believe that you, that when you go through a process like this, those of you who are educators have heard of backwards design. It's a system of design and curriculum. And what, what Wiggins and McTie argued is that you begin with the end in mind. Instead of writing all this curriculum and then deciding, okay, now we've reached the end and let's develop the assessments, you actually begin with the end in mind. What is it that you want to accomplish? That's the question we should be asking ourselves. I believe that, in my opinion, and that's why it's, it's my recommendations, it's what I believe after looking at this, that the end in mind is addressing this adolescent issue of sleep deprivation. Why? Because I think it is serious. I think the science is enough for me, and I'm a skeptic, is enough for me to believe that it could absolutely make a difference and potentially save lives. I know that sounds old, but I believe it. So, beginning with the end in mind means saying, what is it that we think needs to be done, and then how do we get there? That was the original rationale for the one year. It is more than one year. It will be one year starting in September. It's April 30th, so we're actually, we'd be giving ourselves 14 months, roughly, more, to, to pull this stuff together. 16 months. That's a long time. But, just the same, here's another part about the backwards design model. A big piece of why they do that is because it's critical that the stakeholders weigh into what it is that you want these kids to learn. So, it's critical in this case, to apply it to this case, that the stakeholders have a chance to have those discussions about before and after-school issues. Before and after-school care at the elementary schools. It's important that the people who are most impacted by it are there around the table making those decisions. Can you imagine if I made the decision in a vacuum? Said, oh no, this is, you want an answer to that? This is what we're gonna do. You want an answer to that? This is what we're gonna do. I can imagine, I can imagine a lot of very unhappy people who said, you never consulted us. You didn't even ask us where the issues were. That's kind of the rationale for this approach. It's not for, it's not, in my view, for purposes of being dismissive of people's concerns. It's actually quite the opposite. It's so that we can respond to the concerns, knowing that we have a big issue. Clearly, this is a fairly complicated, complex topic that will impact everyone differently. There's no doubt about it. So, I talked about the one run. The shift, you know, the one run is probably the most beneficial, but again, the driver issue is a deal breaker. The shift would have more limited adolescent benefits. So it doesn't really come close to the APA minimum of what kids need. It doesn't come close. Quite honestly, the flip is about as, at the lowest level of the APA recommendations. If the APA could tell us what we should do with our secondary students, the start time would be more like a 9 or 10 o'clock. 10 would be perfect. So, we're trying to strike the balance here. A 10 o'clock start time means, forget athletics, it's done. There wouldn't be time. So we're trying to strike the balance between all those competing demands, which is not an easy thing, because these are places where kids are busy. We have high expectations for our kids. We keep them busy. The one major concern that I've had with the shift that I've experienced personally was when I was the superintendent in Easton, they made the change with the shift. And it was a 25-minute change. So they were starting at 7:35, we moved it to 8. And, we just said, no problem, we'll just shift the elementaries as well. Well, the elementaries ended up with that extra 25 minutes, but they already had a fairly late time. And what happened was, the teachers told me, in no uncertain terms, how frustrated they were that they hadn't, that people hadn't listened to their concern, because they felt like the kids pretty much wrapped things up around 2 o'clock. They were exhausted, didn't have anything left in the tank. Some of these kids were little babies, who just still could take naps if they had the opportunity. We're asking a lot of kids today. The state has pushed down all the way into the kindergarten expectations. The kids are tired. To shift our day out later might seem to solve the problem at the secondary level, but it actually doesn't solve the problem at the, at the elementary level. And that's a major concern for me. It was one of the reasons why I shifted my thinking towards the flip. I don't think I need to repeat this. Again, it's the earliest. It's, this, this flip with an 8:35 start, 8:30 would be the minimum of the APA's required safe time, if in fact their shutdown time is 11 o'clock at night. It is, it is not optimal. I don't want people to think that this is the biggest ask we could come forward with. It's actually the minimal ask, if in fact we're honoring the science. So this is a fairly complicated slide, but if we look at the elementary schools and the sleep and wake schedule, because this responds to some of the questions that you asked, sir, about the, you know, the amount of time that the kids are, what time are the kids gonna go to bed if they're getting up, if they're getting their 12 hours sleep? And so, if school started at 7:50, this elementary again, and the doors opened, okay, at 7:35, this is one of those things that would need to be worked out, for secondary and elementary. What time would the doors open? Are we gonna be hard and fast and say, they can't open until 10 minutes before school? So therefore, no more anything for elementary before school? And now that the secondaries would be later, nothing for them either? I'm not sure that that's what we wanna do. That's what I mean by, that's something that needs thoughtful input with the principal and teachers around the table. What's going to be most effective? For example, if a kid at the secondary level, one, if, if the decision down the road was that some clubs should be able to meet on occasion, or there may be able to be practices in the morning before school, that's a different ask. Going to the recycling club at 7:45 versus being in your chair at 7:40 for a bio test are two very different things. And, so, but I, if I had made that decision in this presentation, that's, that's what's gonna happen? People would have been upset. And that's the point that I'm trying to make, is that some of these things require more thought, hence the year and a half, or essentially 16 months to do this. So if it started at 7:50, the doors opened roughly at 7:35, to be determined, and the earliest pickup was 6:50, the kids would typically get up at 6:20. So, if they wanted nine hours of sleep...
I'm sorry.
Could you just let him please present?
Uh, sure. Okay, so, if a person wanted nine hours of sleep, right, I'm saying this is the minimum, obviously. Okay, it's a minimum. It's not ideal. I'll bet you there are a lot of kids actually at the secondary level who use 20 minutes to get out there and get to the bus. But I, I get that this is not, maybe less. But, this is just for, for purposes of explaining something. So, if, if a child needed nine hours sleep, they'd have to go to bed at 9:20 to meet this time. You know, 9:25. If they wanted that 12 hours, they would have to go to bed at 6:20. What, what's important to mention, as it was mentioned before, this, the reason that we have these possibilities is because elementary-aged students actually can fix, you can adjust their circadian rhythm. That's something that the science shows us. Theirs can be adjusted. That's why there are options here. By the way, if, if our survey data was worthwhile, and I believe it was, was it perfect? No. But it definitely provided us with some information, like what time does your child fall asleep? What time does your child get up? The fall asleep, we're saying the sleep time, because this really came, this idea of what time do they fall asleep versus what time do they go to bed? We're using this kind of synonymously, and they're not exactly the same. But, in this, these last two quadrants, the percentage of people who reported that that's the amount of time their kids were sleeping and therefore, or this is the time they were going to bed, was, was pretty small, I believe.
It was actually those times plus 45 minutes, right? Because we moved the 45 minutes back, assuming the flip took place. And the, the 12-hour box would be 1.12%, and the 11.5-hour box is 3.88%. So it's a pretty small distribution.
Of all the people who responded.
Of all the survey respondents. It was about 5% in those boxes.
And those were the elementary parents?
Correct.
So, at the secondary level, we have a similar kind of model. With schools starting at 8:35, doors opening at 8:20, again. This needs to be discussed and hashed out. So a TBD, earliest pickup 7:30. So, if the child's gonna get the eight hours, which is the minimum of the APA, this is what I was saying before, and they're gonna fall asleep at 11, because that is fixed, then these other times, they'll make it. They're, they're not getting enough sleep according to APA. So, this is really mostly to demonstrate, this is not movable. And, it's also to demonstrate that the 8:35 time is, is really the minimum. So, one of the questions that was asked after the last meeting is, what are our big asks? Or, not big asks, big concerns. What are the big five concerns? There, there are many concerns, many questions, but things that will need to be worked out. There's no question. Bus optimizations. Are we effectively using our buses now, and is there anything we can do? There's software out there that allows you to plan routes accordingly, just like people are using when they're traveling through our town. There's software that allows you to plan those routes accordingly. Are we using our buses as effectively and efficiently as we can? That needs to be ironed out. Family and staff personal schedules are a concern. There's no doubt. Some staff, I'm sure, would argue. It would be very beneficial to us, for example, if you brought back a preschool or a daycare in the schools. I'm not saying that that's what's gonna happen, but that's the kind of challenge that some of our teachers are facing. They're struggling with that. Those are legitimate challenges. So those will have to be confronted and grappled with. Schedule optimizations. So, deciding among our competing priorities, because they are important. We don't want to sell our students short in their, in their performing arts performances and say, well, you're only gonna have a half hour for that from now on. That's, those are, that's competing, and it's coming up against these kinds of changes, right? There'll be competing issues, and those have to be addressed. I, I tend to agree with whoever it was, with perhaps Grant, who said, you know, at the, at the pinnacle, at the very top of what's most important in my mind is the safety and health of these kids. That's got to be the driving issue. And so, yes, these other things, we have to look at. After-school activities, staff meeting times, technical details of our schedules, break, advisories potentially, things like that. Those things have to be ironed out. And obviously, how it impacts families. The middle school, high school cafeteria. It is a small cafeteria. We have odd lunch periods. Is there an opportunity for us to perhaps make some corrections here? Or shall we go another 20 years saying it's just always been that way? There might be some things that we could do differently. But it is a challenge. That is a big challenge that cannot be overlooked. Schedule-sensitive athletics, such as golf, sailing, swimming, girls' hockey, or boys' ice hockey. Ice hockey in general, getting a rink. Making sure you can secure pool time. I will just say this, as a former high school principal. Sailing was always a challenge for me, just as rowing was always a challenge for me. There's certain sports that don't fit nicely into kind of typical schedules. You know, a community rowing in Watertown was the place to go for that part of Massachusetts. It was incredibly competitive, and trying to find times was tough. Same thing with hockey. Finding ice time is a challenge. It's always a challenge. That's not gonna change with this. It will still be a challenge. But it doesn't mean I'm prepared anyhow, as the superintendent, to say, well, we're not gonna have those sports anymore. That's unacceptable to me. My student, my students, when they were coming to Dover, Sherburne, my three girls, didn't have the luxury of Kingsbury Club. They practiced in Milford. They practiced in Franklin. Is that at Kingsbury too? I don't remember the name of it, but these other places that were kind of off in the distance. Those are challenges, but we don't wanna disregard those. We don't wanna lose those sports that sometimes go unprotected, because they're not in the papers with the big headlines, but they're still important to those families. And obviously, another notable challenge, are potential hidden costs there? Are there potential hidden costs? Yes, there are potential hidden costs. Do we reach a point where we say, we need more lighted spaces? That is a very real possibility. But, I can't come forward at this juncture and say to you, we're gonna put some lights on the field, and it's gonna cost $1.5 million, which is not there. So, some of those things are just simply going to take time to iron out. So, potential mitigators, bus route reconfiguration addition, I spoke about that. Before and after-school programming enhancements. Yeah, there's possibilities there. I, our elementary students, currently, I don't think, and I might be wrong, that, for example, destination imagination, is that working outside of school, or does that take place at school? Outside. I guess it depends on which town. But, the fact of the matter is, something like a different schedule might actually allow for, for other possibilities that we might not be thinking of. Shortened concurrent after-school activities. So help and clubs and athletics, do these things have to be shortened? Or do they have to run at different, uh, at different times? Could there be limited before school help? Is that possible? Do we wanna take a position where we are simply saying, absolutely under no circumstances would there be anything before school? Or could there be some kind of compromised position? But it's not the same kind of demands as I mentioned before. Are there possible, possibilities for before school staff activities that we're now doing after school? That puts pressure on teachers to stay later? Are there things that we could do earlier? Meetings, professional development, um, just simple time for teachers to collaborate. If you're a special education teacher and you work collaboratively with a general, general education teacher, it would be nice to be able to have the time to collaborate before the school day actually begins. Right, and that's something that we may not have thought about. And, and even like fitness, we have a goal that is about the social emotional wellbeing of our staff and students, not just our students. Is there anything that we can do that would be helpful to our staff? Um, school schedule optimizations, um, right now, it, uh, if a student has a DR, it's not a big fight with the administration, I don't believe. And John is here, so he could clarify, but you could potentially create a system where, I think it's for seniors only if they have a DR, John?
Correct.
If a senior has a DR, then they, they don't have to be here for that first period, the directed research, what we used to refer to as studies. If that happens in the first period, a senior doesn't have to be there till the second period. Is that possible that we could do that across the board? In a system that I worked in, they had something called permanent dismissal. And the parents signed a permanent dismissal, and when that kid had a DR first block or last block, they didn't have to be there, and there weren't all sorts of questions asked, and there were no detentions or anything like that because the parents had signed that permission. Is that something that we could do? Class scheduling, uh, potential for advisory periods, these are all potential mitigators. And, and there are a few other possible additional benefits. As I mentioned, maybe some after school activities or enrichments, uh, before school collaboration. This is somewhat redundant. Uh, but the innovative programming and innovative scheduling, you know, we have an initiative right now that talks about being as innovative as we can possibly be. Coming up with creative ideas to put in front of our kids. Our schedule changes might allow us opportunities to do some of that, that we haven't yet thought of. So again, what are the guiding principles? The student health and safety, that is my number one priority as, as your superintendent. It was my number one priority as a principal, it should be all of our number one priorities. The process and communication moving forward, the inclusiveness of this process moving forward is hugely important. This shouldn't be me making isolated decisions about things like after school activities. It has to be an inclusive process. I, I, I want to emphasize again that this is not a panacea for all the Ales kids. We get that. And that people need help working with their children, some people need guidance with it. When we have a parent coffee and some of the people say, well, I asked my kid to put the, the iPad down, but they don't do it. So maybe we need to do some more educating in that regard about how to do that. Obviously, a key guiding principle for us moving forward, in my opinion, to what I would consider phase two of this process would be that we preserve our current programs in athletics and we do not undermine those because we have clearly identified that those are important to us. So staff community communication, obviously. Reconfigured start time task force, I believe that's the way to do this. That we, we take that task force, keep who we can, but bring other people into the process. There'll be transportation and traffic issues at all of our schools. Staff implications, what are the staffing implications if we have teachers working at different schools, elementary and secondary, and now they're shifting their times, are there implications? School schedules, are there changes that we could make? Before and after school programming for all of the schools, athletics, obviously. Sleep education, communications, sleep research, so there's a lot that still needs to be done. And I see that as happening this spring and into next fall. So I'm sure I did not answer all of the questions, uh, but that is what I. So if there are questions, I will definitely take.
Hi. Answered some questions that were asked. Adrian, looks like you wanna go first.
Maybe you'll say the same thing.
Thank you, Andrew. I just wanna start with a little parenthesis, just on youth sports, the lady who's. Um, I, I'm one of the people who run youth soccer for DS. And I know a little bit about baseball as well. For those sports, for soccer anyway, eight hundred kids, age four to fourteen, play youth soccer. Ninety-nine percent of it is on the town field, not, we don't get access to high school field. Um, I think for baseball, that's true for, in about eighty percent of cases. And for basketball, they do use the middle and high school gym, but they also use Chickering on Pine Hill as well. So just, I wanted to share some context there. I don't know enough about lacrosse to, well, and I think lacrosse probably does use the, the high school fields, but I just wanted to give that content.
Yeah, they do, they do, so every time I trip, they'll be in the basketball mix, there's a team practicing there, there's a team practicing there, so some.
Some. Um, I, I'm, I'm on the Dover School Committee, uh, which is responsible for Chickering, which is elementary aged kids. But I do find myself, when I've been thinking about this issue, very much aware of these elementary kids who come in and talk to, come in and talk to very quickly. And, um, I'm, I was here in two thousand and sixteen with Richard and, and before, when, when, when the work and, and when we first started reading articles and science articles about the issue of sleep deprivation for young children. And for me, for me, the, the science is clear enough for me. And I truly believe that in decades to come, twenty, thirty, forty years, years' time, this will be the changing, uh, the start times for the children who are older. Will be the single my sins won't show change that, that could have been done or will have been done to help them with a better mental health for all their lives and a psychological state for, for, for all of their lives. I, I, I really, I feel that the health of our children as they go to the end of their academic career should be forefront of our minds. But the, the other thing I just wanna say is, I'm, I'm always reminded of what a school committee member is, is meant to do and what they're not meant to do. We, we're responsible for hiring, retaining, evaluating superintendent. Responsible for finance, so making sure that the budgets are appropriately designed. And we're responsible for policies. I'm always reminded that we're not responsible for operations, we're not responsible for what goes on in classrooms, we're not responsible for how, um, schools operate. That's left to the administration team, the superintendent, um, leads. And whilst I, I completely respect, and, and I also see the unknowns, I feel that I, uh, I trust the administration team and the leadership team that we have to manage those unknowns. If, if we were rushing into it in, in the autumn, I would be concerned. I'm very reassured that we're not, and I'm very reassured that that decision to not rush into it came from the superintendent and his team. So for me, I, I, I feel that in terms of, uh, the decision, the logic and the appropriate strategic worry that I should or shouldn't have, I, I'm, I feel that I trust the team to manage these issues that are unknown and that will be managed. And I think the comments that were said at the beginning of this meeting about the superintendent and his leadership team, I think should be felt by all the school committee members when we consider that there's a lot to be done. So I, I, I personally, I will be voting to support.
I wasn't gonna say that. Not quite that way. I, actually, what, I, I completely agree with, with Janice Barry and many of the people that were talking about the devil being in the details, and I a hundred percent believe that. And coming into today, I was, that was my biggest concern, were about all of those detailed questions. What I heard that I really hadn't thought about before is that you're asking for that table to be expanded, to have those discussions about the details. And I hadn't really thought about it that way, but that is what it's gonna take to make this work or not work. I think if you had come in with all of the answers, we would've been able to shoot holes in all of them. But I think that bringing all of the different voices, and I would certainly hope that all the people who are here and all the people who are watching would volunteer to be on one of those working groups. Obviously, around the faculty and the staff is probably, besides the parents, the biggest impact that we have. And what I would like to hear is your vision on committing to, when are you gonna check back in? So if you said to me, um, this is what we're gonna do, and in the December meeting, I'm sorry, the September meeting, or maybe at the latest, the October meeting, before we head into budget, that we're gonna come back and report out on all of these working groups and get to that level of detail and get this group, which won't include me, but the next group, um, those answers, then that would make me feel much better. That we had on the calendar a check back point that would hold everybody to, and, and that would also give us more runway to either identify more problems or if something needs to change, we still have time to, to adjust.
So in, in response to that, I, I, um, I love that idea. And I, and I definitely would commit to coming back, but I don't know if that timeline is ideal, and here's why. And, and it's pretty tough, I know from years of trying, it's pretty tough to get people to really hone down and focus in, in May and June. And then to get people to come in and work on some of these things in the summer when you really, I mean, if you really want a thoughtful process and lots of people have that opportunity to weigh in, that might be tough too. So I see it as something that begins in those first two months of the year. And perhaps a report out in late October or November. It does have potential budget implication, so that's why that has to be, uh, done thoughtfully. And if there, uh, what I don't think we should be doing is coming up with these things and then springing something in the mid, the middle of the budget cycle. We should know fairly early on in the budget cycle if there's going to be an ask, if we're anticipating an ask of some kind of, of something financial impact.
So if I could jump in on that, um, the, one of the, the tools that other districts have employed that I thought was really effective is, is to have an outwardly facing, essentially a, just a very simple project management checklist to show what's going on in, in each particular sub-working group. What are the issues that are being handled and, and what's the next action item? Um, and then when the next school committee, kind of formal school committee, um, report out would be. And so that's something I, I, I think would be useful for us to, to put together. And then at any particular time, we would keep the, the task force would keep that updated real time. So it would be a, a living document of where the process is.
Sorry, Judy first, even though I didn't book that, like, you're next.
I, I wanna address three things that are not really related. The first, by the way, for anybody who doesn't know, I was, I've been on the school's start time committee and I am wholly supportive of, um, the recommendation, of Dr. Teo's recommendation. I was part of the, the team that talked to other school districts way in the beginning. And the, the thing that I found most interesting and maybe heartening for, um, all of the people from Dover, and I understand what you're saying, 'cause I am a working mom. You know, we have, both my husband and I work, is that the elementary kids, um, by and large, performed better with the earlier start time, um, because they didn't have the problem that was mentioned of, you know, at one thirty or two o'clock, they're, you know, just lying down on the floor and taking a nap. And so while that isn't, you know, while the earlier start time has issues that need to be worked out, that's a benefit for your, for, for the elementary kids. I wanna thank Janice Barry for, um, speaking so eloquently, um, about the topic. I have worked with Janice, I worked with Janice for a number of years on, um, in the drama program. Uh, I have a son who will be working in the field of theater, has a job when he graduates from college in three weeks. And so I, more than most people, appreciate the importance of those after school activities 'cause my son was in every single show that, that was put on in the school district when he was in school here. And I agree with Janice that it is crucial to work really hard to make sure we get those after school activities, um, and the after school help and all of that right. I think it's crucial, you won't like this, but you be involved. You know, and that as many of the faculty and as many of the advisors and give their input and that, that every, because we have really fabulous, smart teachers here. And we have lots of really fabulous, smart parents and students. And I believe that it's really important for everyone to give us input and to be part of the process to make this the best possible change that we can make. And I think we can do that, and I thought it was a brilliant idea to have that sixteen month period where we can work on those issues and make sure we get it as right as we can. But I have to say that the reason that I support this WIP is be, is because I think that the mental health of our students, our children is more important than anything. Uh, and I think that the data is very clear that this is a mental health issue and that we really don't have another alternative if we're going to support good, the good mental health of our kids. That's it.
Thank you, Judy.
I encourage, like Dana, that those of you who are here tonight to have input, that you continue to have input, having been on the regional school committee for, and the Pine Hill School Committee for a few, a few years, a long time. It's great to see parents here and community members when it's a hot topic and it's something very close to you. But I can guarantee that almost every month that we are discussing here is something that will touch upon you and your family, and I encourage all of you to keep abreast of what's happening at, um, your school committee meetings. I also note, um, that I totally agree with the benefits of sleep, with the benefit of family time, as you mentioned, um, the importance of meals together as a family and the need for parents and students to make choices. It's not for me to tell another family how to parent. We, in my family, made certain choices that allowed me. choices that allowed me to stay at home and to be there at meals with my family. You know, you make, as you say, Andrew, the, the, some parents say 10:30, phones downstairs or whatever time it is, no cell phones till a certain age. Those are all family decisions and choices that we all have to make as we move forward. Janice, again, thank you for so eloquently stating the issues from the teacher perspective. I think those were many of the things that were on my list of concerns. And related to that, I think everyone needs to know that there is Article 10 in the contract about teaching hours that specifically says, you know, when meetings are being held with teachers, after-school hours for after-help, and those kinds of things are set out. There's an appendix to the contract that talks about how teachers are paid for clubs and extracurricular activities. Those kinds of things are the responsibility of the school committees and are negotiated by the school committees with the teachers' union, and, you know, changes to that as they may need will have to be negotiated. The elementary school issues, you know, ring loud and clear. You know, my kids were little ones, they're grown now. The issues of what time you get up in the morning, what time you get at the bus, if it's dark, cold, et cetera, I, I, for years, drove to the end of my driveway for my kids to get on the bus. So, you know, there are some significant issues to be discussed and to be resolved, hopefully, in a collaborative manner. Having sat in this seat for a very long time, it is extremely difficult for me to say yes to something without having those answers and without knowing budgetary expenditures that may come out of this because of being a regional school committee member and being responsible for a $24 million budget with one town asking us, you know, essentially never to increase our budget in the next couple of years. That, that's a tough place to be.
If I could just respond to, to the one thing about the, the buses. I just want to reiterate, because I'm not sure I made this clear, and it was something I wanted to mention, this can be done in a cost-neutral way. The question is, would you be able to do it in the best way possible? So, you know, the cost-neutral, the reason it's cost-neutral is because you basically just reverse the times that the, the kids start school. You're not adding buses, you're not, you know, that, none of that is changing. You already have your staff in place, you already have your after-school clubs and stipends in place. The question is, if we, if we view through this process some opportunities for enhancements, are there potential costs that way for example, like the buses? So, yes, right.
Because I come to this, my two hats. One is that it's been fascinating to learn this sleep science, having now an adolescent who mirrors everything that Dr. Seizer and everything else that we've read. And I can allow you to know that when you go to that fifth, sixth grade transition, the wheels can fall completely off the bus, and that's continued through middle school. So, I see it firsthand, it's just fascinating to me how real the science is, that the most possible sleep is beneficial at the secondary level. That's, I think, partially a no-brainer now. My DSC hat, you know, I worry about the younger students being up and early and, and the tension with everyone's schedules. So, for a lot of this process, I will admit, I was a fan of the push. And it, we did a lot of looking at server results, going to meetings, going to the coffees, talking to tons of parents, elementary parents. And knowing that the one run was not feasible, and doing all the due diligence, I've, two things kept coming out, that sooner or later, these elementary kids are going to be secondary kids, and it's frankly, a lot sooner than you think. And, and how tired the little ones are at the end of the day, and, and that brought me back to tucking and remembering, hearing teachers saying that, that last hour of the day is really tough. So, I converted. I mean, I really, I do feel that the flip, if we're going to give our secondary students the best possible outcome, and our elementary students the benefits, and to mitigate the problems as much as possible, to get them as close to 8 o'clock as humanly possible, even if it costs a little bit of money to sort out that busing, I would be an advocate for that. And I think, and there will be adjustments. We talked to academic innovation committee a lot about how we need to be problem solvers and creative, and we want our kids, these are the portrait of the graduate that we want to send out to the world. We're going to be modeling this big time the next couple of years, and we can bring them all in with us and, and go through that process together. But I also don't want to lose the fact that there's going to be some really positive consequences. We harp a lot about the negatives tonight, but we're going to look at the importance, teach and educate our whole community about the importance of sleep and sleep hygiene, which is a lifelong lesson for all of us, and one that I'm still learning, frankly, at my age. But I hope we look at homework policies and practices so that that's not a tension on the backside. I think families, we talk about making choices around balance and extracurricular commitments, well, we might very well force the issue. And I don't think that's a bad thing, personally. Seeing efficiencies from coaches and leaders of other activities after school, and not to lose sight of most positively increased academic, athletic, and overall performance and overall mental health for our kids. So, I'm a, been a convert to the, to the flip as we've gone through this whole process. And I just want to say, lastly, when we talk about this 215, I, I think we have to think about this as just something that we're very familiar with. I mean, I, my high school ended after three, we did three season sports, commuted 45 minutes home, had a very rigorous homework schedule, and it was just very normal. That's just what everybody did. So, we're going to have to look at the, look at what we do just because we're used to doing it, and what we, and how that doesn't necessarily have to be the way that we have to do it.
I would just sort of add to that before I share what I was going to share, that, that the school schedule as it exists is not ideal for families with two working parents. There are childcare arrangements to be figured out, there are parents who miss dinner, and you sort of double down on family breakfast instead. And according to Denise Pope, who came to speak for Challenge Success, that's fine. It doesn't matter what meal you're eating together, as long as it's together. But I was going to speak to some of the concerns from elementary school parents. So I am a member of the, the start time task force. I'm an elementary school parent. I have a kindergartner, a second grader, and a fifth grader, and I'm a high school teacher. So I can appreciate sort of both ends of this spectrum. And I do support the, the flip, and I don't think I could do that in good conscience if I had read anything that suggested we'd be harming our elementary school students by flipping the start times. We don't have as much research on elementary school sleep and start times for the younger kids as we do for adolescents, in part because they're not in crisis the way our adolescents are. But the sleep specialists we've consulted, Dr. Judith Or- Owens, thank you, from Children's Hospital, and Dr. Seizer suggests that the time of the flip is in line with the circadian rhythms of our younger kids. And Dr. Owens suggests anywhere between 7:30 and 9:00 is a potentially ideal start time for an elementary school student. And I think there, that the sort of education around sleep hygiene is going to be really helpful, and will allow families to sort of prioritize things as they see fit, sort of knowing all of the, the variables. One of the gentlemen who spoke about the preschool students referenced the Monomoy District on the Cape, which did a flip, and they noticed that there was a decrease in discipline referrals in the afternoon, a decrease in nurse visits at the elementary school level, an increase in academic performance, and decreased early dismissal. So anecdotally, we're seeing positive impacts, and some of the research supports those as well. I think the other thing that I'm thinking about, when Dr. Kio was mentioning his mitigators, I see a lot of those as opportunities to enhance our program, ways to bring more play into the elementary school morning, so they're still getting that playtime, working with the academic innovation committee to really look creatively at the high school schedule. And I think having now a structure in place of a flip will enable more creativity. Sometimes you need those structures to kind of bounce off of. And as a teacher, I would be really excited to be on the ground doing this creative work and sort of rethinking things alongside people working with Challenge Success and the academic innovation committee. One of my concerns throughout the process has been our Boston students, and a flip wouldn't address their sleep needs, in that we have one bus. And this has come up on start time committee and has been a focus of ours. And in thinking about, you know, could we push our elementary school students a few minutes later if we added a couple of buses? Maybe, would it be more beneficial potentially to talk about adding another Boston bus so that all of our students benefit from this change? That's all I have.
Angie, you can go next.
I really like to point about the Boston students. That was also on my radar. I, and we have talked to some degree, even not even within the start time, something about adding a second bus. That was something that was very positive that's come out of these discussions, because people didn't realize that situation. I would like to piggyback on what Dana said like an hour ago, that I really like the idea of having a hard stop in, and I prefer early October, kind of at the latest, where the next level, the deeper dive into some more information is being presented. I was not on the start time task force, and they did a lot of research and learned a lot of things that I have not had access to. So I would love to have that deeper dive, and I think it needs to be in late September, early October, in part, because not only do we have the budget, but we also have negotiations. And as Claire mentioned, any changes really need to be pulled into that. And that work starts, you know, over the summer. Another quick point is that I think we have to make sure that we're consistent in our messaging, in that if we're decided the most important thing is the health and wellbeing of our students and we get even more sleep is, is what we've decided, is what we need to do for them, then we need to be very wary of before-school activities, because it doesn't matter if it's a recycling club or an academic, if they're not getting the sleep, they're not getting the sleep. It doesn't seem that there's much data about, I don't have data about the quality of the activity, it's the quality of the sleep. The other thing I would like is to note, though, is if we do this hard stop in September, October, and all of a sudden we realize, oh goodness, there are issues that we didn't realize that were, that come up, or we can't address the elementary school concerns about my child has to go to bed at 6:20 to be able to get up at night, to get up at 6:20 the next morning, and that's not, something that we can handle, what are our possible outcome? What are the possible next steps? If we vote on this recommendation, is it set in stone? Could it become, if we decide, say, a flip and push, could there be some sort of other adjustments? How flexible will we be if the research, when we start doing this next level, finding the details? What do we have, what can we do with that next, at that level, if we find that there are things that we just did not imagine ahead of time? Or if we realize that we're actually adding to our students' stress and anxiety, because we're now trying to push things, too many things, into a smaller period of time, and maybe it's not having the benefits that we thought, what's the next, what is the potential for adjustment? I think it's something we need to be, God, let's sit down and let's discuss.
So she addressed my Boston issue, because that was one of my concerns, because Kate's, you know, educated me a lot about the Metco kids, and so I've gotten to know them, and it was really hard for them in the mornings. So maybe if we could address that with the issue. And I do think that the more we get into this, there are places where we can save time. I do think our buses can be tightened up quite a bit. And I think once we sit down and look at this, we're going to find where we can save a little bit here and there, time-wise, and a little bit means a lot for them. I have an elementary school, a middle school, and a junior and high school. I can tell you, my junior is a girl, she can get herself ready in 10 minutes because she wants to sleep that much longer. She's in a late study, and she doesn't waste time. She comes home and starts on it right away. So, you know, it's not a time-waste thing. Trying to get her up in the morning, and her brother, who he just goes to bed, he's in eighth grade, he just forgets the homework if he hasn't finished it, and goes to bed at 10 o'clock. He's like, I'm done, whatever happens, happens. So you just have different kids. But I would love to give them, you know, that opportunity to have that little extra sleep, because I'm trying to make them eat something on the way out the door. She's taking a protein drink, he's sitting there like a zombie. And then my little one bounces up at 6:45 and is, you know, hopping around, ready to go. So I do think that the science, and I think the task force, because I've learned so much from this process. And I've made myself start to go to bed earlier. My husband's not on the same schedule, because he's mostly out of the country, and when he is home, he's up all night. So his sleep hygiene is horrible. So as a family, we can all get on the same page if we get on a better schedule school-wise. But I do appreciate it. I do think it's going to be a change, but I do see, just from my kids, really the impact it's had on their, I mean, their mental health. I mean, my junior will break down, and I think it's a lot of lack of sleep, and just her emotions get all miswired. And I do think if we can help our kids, because like I said in my remarks at the beginning, Dr. Kio's main objective for me is to be an advocate for our children, and that's what I think this is.
I just, I also wanted to find out what the plans were for the Boston students. I'd like to hear some more, if you can tell us about options there and costs. And also, there's a huge range on the homework for the elementary kids, zero to two hours, and I think we could get some more consistency around that. Pine Hill has no homework for preschool through third grade. And I'm just trying to figure out how we can be a little more consistent, because I think that would help the family schedules in the evening.
Thank you, first of all, to all the members of the task force. I, I can't, I've followed this issue from when it was a task force in the 2013 or 15, there's been a lot of research in this community on this issue, obviously also in other member communities, but, but we collectively, and you guys in particular, have really done the homework. I appreciate very much the outreach that happened when, from the, the research phase that done to where we are tonight. I think that we have done a good job in reaching out to families and to community members, and, and I very much appreciate that, because I think anytime that we're considering making a change that has such a wide impact on folks, that it's important that we do this, the outreach, that is. Philosophically and scientifically, I have also done my own research, some of the same and some of my own, and I do support the science, I'll hand it. I, I think that I echo what many of my colleagues, and, and especially particularly, thank you for your eloquent explanation on behalf of the staff, the details that we've been involved in this. And so I'm very attuned to what I would think of as Phase Two of the task force. And I think the, the proof for me of whether or not we can work as a collaborative system with all of the parts, families and school committee and, and staff, will be whether or not we can, as a collective group, attack that work. And it's my hope that all the folks who are here tonight, you know, as, as Claire mentioned, we were here last month and heard this presentation. So I, I hope that all of us who are really invested in here tonight and interested will dig in on the actual work, should this vote go forward to change, because I think it's something that will work or not work with all of us rolling in the vote together. So thank you for all the community and the staff and the parent families who came tonight to spend the evening with us. We like your company.
Two playoff games, that must have been.
I know. I really appreciate that you're here with us, because it's a great place to be. Every month, we're here, the show happens.
Yes, Laurie.
Sure. So I, too, have had the benefit of being able to have been researching this, going to other towns, thinking about this since 2016 for me. And I feel very lucky also to have had the benefit of being able to access the great information that the task force, this current task force, has been able to assemble. So I, too, was very concerned about the unknowns, you know, especially budgetary impacts. That was a big concern for me, and I was able to reach out to the task force and say, here are my concerns, what are your thoughts? Are you thinking about these things? Don't have to have all the answers, but what I can assure you is that all the big-ticket items that you're worrying about, these committee members are all thinking about and are trying to find ways to make this, as Amanda so eloquently put it, opportunities, whether it's advisories, whether it's, you know, play opportunities, you mentioned. I think this can be a really great benefit for this district. I think this can be a really great benefit for this district. And I'm hoping that we can all work together, to put our heads together, to come up with a reasonable way of coming about it. And so I'm excited to be able to vote for it.
Yes, Kate.
I don't want to repeat a lot of what people have said so eloquently, but just so people who might know I'm on the Sherburne School Committee, I also work closely with the MEKO director as a liaison. And the MEKO students are in a really unique situation, logistically, obviously. And because we have one bus, so a flip would really not affect them at all, because they're already all coming together on one bus. A push, although it might get them more sleep, would actually potentially have their day be even longer, a lot, because they would hit different traffic times. So I couldn't be a bigger supporter of getting those students more equal access to everything that we have, including sleep. But that is a unique situation that we will continue to work on, and having another bus would be amazing. And then just as a parent and school committee member, like Angie, I have one in elementary, I have two in high school. So it's really interesting to see them both, and I know, you know, a lot of people are all over the place for their kids' ages. So my daughter also leaves herself 10 minutes to get out the door, wash her face, brush her teeth, you know, no makeup, grab something to eat if we're lucky, pulling her out of bed at 7:05, where my younger guy is up and hanging around and chatting and getting ready for his day. I realize, you know, he's not a 12-hour kid, he's probably a 10-hour kid. And I have walked my older kids out to the bus at 6:55. When they're in sixth and seventh grade, they still feel really little. It's still, the elementary kid, it comes quickly as they get older. So I get it, that's not ideal, and we're, you know, we're trying to work out the details. But our job, I believe, and in talking to the Pine Hill parents, you know, we're not just thinking about our kids, we're not just thinking about Pine Hill, we're thinking about what's best for all of the kids, so.
Any other comments? Oh.
Can I just do a quick, I just want to be really careful about, we refer to mental health and depression as, and some people have kind of been saying, wow, it's caused by lack of sleep. I just think that we need to be really careful that while lack of sleep is a contribute, may be contributing factor, that it really, depression is a medical condition that has lots of factors, and that this, more sleep may help mitigate some of the issues, but that it's not, it's not the cure for depression. And that depression, and you never would say to somebody, oh, just get more sleep and you won't be depressed anymore. So we make sure that people are very clear about that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to point out, for people who are curious to learn more, all of the research we've done is on our website. So we created specifically an FAQ for elementary school families that went up earlier last week, over the break. So there's a lot of information there, if you want to join us in our deep diving of all of this stuff. Once you get into it, you can't stop. We've got things on the way here. But, so just, it's there.
Great. I would just like to say, and I know we've all said something, or a lot of people have echoed some of their thoughts, there's some details that obviously need to be worked out. I really like the idea of check-ins earlier than later. That being said, you mentioned summertime. There's work that, you know, we don't tell, what Adrian said, we do policy and budget and manage you. But that being said, maybe we can give you a little guidance and think about things that don't need to be committee-wise, like talking to buses, like looking at the schedules. You guys can look at schedule programming. I mean, there's a lot of constituents and groups that have input, and they should be consulted and worked with and come together. But there's stuff that you can come to September, or maybe, I wouldn't say June, I'll say come to September and have done, or at least have information on. Done is a great help in that area, I'm sure. So that's something that might be able to be taken care of. Another thing is, a lot of us have spent some time, a lot of us have spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I came to the table as, you know, put your kids to bed, get your kid up, make it work, type of scenario, and, you know, whatever the time is the time, and if it was staying the same, then so be it. After looking into this more and more and understanding the science, the impact of the little ones getting out of school a bit earlier, clearly the impact on the adolescents, which a lot of us have, you know, I've kind of come around that what we do within our walls of our house have an impact, and we still have that control, and we still can improve on our children's sleep hygiene or homework or after-school activities. But what we do as a school committee can really help with a framework around when school starts and stops. What I do at home does not affect when school starts and stops, but what I do in school committee can. So, you know, we can help influence some of the things that happen within these buildings, but what happens at home, we can hope that people make wise decisions that fits their specific needs. I also believe in our administration, I believe our administration can work it out and can reach out to community and work together. So for that, I have full support for the flip, and I really appreciate everything that everyone's put into this.
Thanks. Do you have a motion?
Do you have one?
I'd love to hear it.
Do you guys have one?
Do you have the text or the motion that you want?
I did not type up a text. I'm sorry. What I, what I think I'm hearing you say, however, because I wasn't sure how this was going to go, so what I think I'm hearing you say is that you are in support of, or that there seems to be support for a motion that would effectively say that supports a decision to flip the times with the earliest start for the elementary schools being 7:50, or later, or later.
Right.
So no, no earlier than 7:50, but I'm trying to guess what I'm hearing from you, so.
Yeah, let's keep going, and we'll come up with a better language.
Michael, you've thought about this.
I, well, I drafted one, and it's, well, I sent.
You have it?
You did? Yeah. It was in the first version.
Since you've memorized it, why don't you tell us anyway?
Well, the concept of it, it really is having that no, no earlier than for each one of the schools. The question is, and kind of had in brackets, whether there's an outside period to that also. So if it's a no earlier than and no later than for each of the schools, or is it just a no earlier than?
I think we have to vote it on a no later than also, for the high schools, if we go later, you push it back, the more, pretty substantial impacts it would have for things that we have to start planning for now.
But then we can't change the no earlier. I mean, we can't push it later because of the.
You can't change either, we're not changing.
Well, it's a question of how, so do you have a window of 10 minutes, or 15 minutes, or five minutes, or just a no earlier than?
Do we know what the minimum time is for the buses to turn around?
No.
Do you have, so we know that?
Not yet.
No, because there are things that will come into account that will be budget-based and non-budget-based, where we could enhance.
Well, can we make a motion that says the schools will start no earlier at the elementary school than 7:50, and no later at the high school than 8:35?
Maybe we want a no earlier than 8:35.
No earlier than.
No, no later than. You basically, you bound the problem, no earlier than this in the elementary, no later than that on the high school, and then as you're doing the details, you figure out where the slide is within that.
But if you found, your concern is the [inaudible].
Correct.
You could vote that, and then if they did the research and found something otherwise, you can have another. I [inaudible].
Judy?
Yeah, this is rough, but can I move to adopt the recommendation of the superintendent to set the start time for Chicaring and Pine Hill, no earlier than 7:50 a.m., and to set the start time for the middle school and high school, no later than 8:35 a.m.? Did I get that right?
I would, I would look to push, to push that no later than, to give some operational flexibility when figuring out the details. So that the earlier, I think, makes sense on the elementary, where the secondary, I would recommend 8:40, 45. So there's the flex.
I understand, but I can't support, I don't want to have this, but I feel like we need to give, we are, as a regional school committee rep, I am representing families, but also thinking along the lines of the faculty, by moving the [inaudible]. I don't want, I, for sleep time, yeah, I'd like them all to start at 10 a.m. But for practical problem solving, I'm asking people to convene problem-solving things, which they, it's really different.
Yeah, and here's the other thing that I would say, which is, let's leave it as I wrote it, and then if, we are going to come back, as Ann and others have suggested, at the beginning of October, report back to see if there are any of those big issues that we hadn't thought about. You're looking at me kind of funny.
No, I think.
You know what I mean? And so if this is one of those, then, and we need another five or 10 minutes.
Then.
Elementary school later, and have them start.
Without impacting, but if we find out that that's not, you know, it doesn't work perfectly, we would come back with another proposal.
With the language that way, that doesn't, that means we could not change. You know what I'm saying, like, it could also mean that it stays exactly the way it is.
Well, we're saying you're.
But the way that that's.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Right. So let me re, then let me rephrase it to, let the start time, okay, so.
Want to reread that?
Yeah, I will reread it when I.
That's a good point. Careful.
Really good point. Okay. So, move to adopt the recommendation of the superintendent to flip the start times of the elementary schools on the one hand, and the middle and high schools on the other hand, and set the start time for the elementary schools, no earlier than 7:50 a.m., and the start time for the high schools, no later than 8:00. Middle school and high school, no later than 8:35 a.m.
And I would just shorten that to say, flip the start times such that, and then just move to the times. I don't think you need to repeat the elementary and middle high school.
Such that, okay.
You getting all this, Amy?
Yep.
Oh, that's right, Amy, you.
Do I have a motion in Dover?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in Sherburne?
So. Was that a second, sorry, in the region?
So.
Okay, second.
Dover, do I have any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? You know.
Sherburne, further discussion? All in favor?
In the region discussion? I actually have a quick question. I just want to clarify that we are saying that we can go back and submit a new proposal that alters this if we find reason to do so. I just want to make sure the world is clear on that, so that, so that we don't go in September and say, well, no, we voted on it, so we can't.
That's what I'm hearing you say, for the record.
You may want to have the implementation date in the motion, just to make it clear that's not.
Yes, for implementation in 2021.
Oh, and in 2021. For school year 2021. Good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
What will we do without you?
All right, so we've got that, so we're adjusted in Dover.
Dover, yeah.
Adjusted, so now in Sherburne, all in favor. I'm sorry, region. I'm Sherburne. The region, all in favor, abstain. Passes.
Well, thank you. All right, now we have another.
Michael, can we have a second discussion of the region after this?
Do you want to go?
No. Do you want to talk a lot?
No, no, no. No, I thought you'd be, like, do you want to go while they're getting out?
So just believe we have Dawn with a proposal for.
I'm trying to throw out, in line with the [inaudible], we're looking at a lot of our fees that we're charging, a lot of times the increase that [inaudible] here, effectively years, like the [inaudible].
Guys, we are still having a meeting, mind staying here.
We still be there, so you can talk here.
Thank you.
So really, I provided you some information, your package is going to set the stage. So at each of your main meetings, I'll be bringing you more detailed information about your fund balances, your revenues, participation rates. I also have area school lunch prices. I found that from last time, to try to do it all three together was, it actually took a long time. So we broke it off, and so you'll each be able to talk about in each of your individual committees, the price increase, and then we will vote for it in June altogether, so if there's any, obviously, what everyone's voting saying, so do that, that way. Okay? If you have any questions, though, that you think of in the interim, before the main meeting, send it to your chairs, and that way I'll be able to address it in a timely fashion. Okay?
We'll be discussing it, May, and the new members.
Yes, so we'll, exactly. And it's one of, we need to get into a routine of just updating, a more routine of our food services, so that'll become more.
For new members, I might suggest, feel free to forward this information to the new members, and if they want to attend the May meeting, they can just hear the discussion. So there's some consistency there. Wonderful. Thank you. One more agenda item is our consent agenda for the approval of minutes from April 9, 2019. Is there any comment? Admissions, fixes, consent? So in Dover, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that has presented? Second? Thank you.
Do we have a motion in Sherburne?
So moved.
Second.
Region?
So moved.
Flag on.
Discussion in Dover? All in favor? Thank you.
Discussion in Sherburne? All in favor?
Region? All in favor?
Thank you.
So one more quick thing, and for those of you that stuck around to the whole meeting and get [inaudible].
There's only four.
There's mine, though.
Just fine.
This is our last joint school committee meeting with four members, I believe. So though everyone, these four members represent their individual committees, I like to think of the joint committee as the extra one. So I would like to thank Dana White. Thank you very much. Don't go too far, we do need guidance, as you have witnessed. Claire, thank you very much. This is great. You also don't go very far.
My number will be 12.
You guys are a bright kids. So thank you.
Adrian Hill. And Jennifer Devon. Yes, there's some, a lot to do.
Maybe there's some people out there who.
I may eye contact with a few.
That's where it begins.
With that being said, eating adjourned.
Thank you.